I didn't see any either, so. I looked at the table out front and I didn't see any, so. Alright. We'll go ahead and review the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priori- priorities are A, articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective, ineffective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. So I skipped, uh, let's discuss and approve the agenda. That would require a motion and a second. Everybody should have gotten the agenda in advance, and I think everybody has a copy in front of them.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Then do we need to, Ted, do we need to do something with the closed session?
Maybe just discuss it, just sure that we have the first part of it.
Alright, so before this, we did have a closed session for the superintendent evaluation. We have ended that closed session to come into open session. And we'll move on to the education spotlight.
Yeah, so today we have Dr. Brown and it looks like one of our students. She's here to talk about our acceleration opportunities that we're providing for students this summer, so.
Hello. Assuming this is where I go. Okay.
You have to turn the mic on. Sharon, she's got to put it up on the mic.
Oh. Either way, it's fine. It's up. Okay. Let me just grab my... Okay, so I have a couple of things that I brought in really quickly to kind of help explain it. This one. We'll kind of go through.
Okay.
So do I need, are you doing it or am I doing it?
You can.
Okay. Okay, so with, I did not change. Okay. Okay, perfect. So with giftedness, I just wanted to start off with a couple of different definitions here that kind of address a few things as far as what is giftedness. And so I included the definition from the, oh, I can't even remember now. Oh, the National Association of Gifted Children Council. And they have that higher, students with gifted and talented talents perform or have the capability to perform at higher levels compared to the others of the same age, experience, and environment in one or more domains. And that they require modifications to their educational experience to learn and realize their potential. But those modifications look different at, at different places. The Federal Elementary Secondary Education Act defines gifted and talented students as students, children, or youth who give evidence of high achievement, capability, in areas such as intellectual, creative, artistic, or leadership capacity in specific or in specific academic fields, and whose needs, services, and activities not ordinarily provided by the school in order to fully develop those capabilities. So the one that we're talking about today is the academic one, where it's specific academic areas that students are doing well in. With the enrichment program, we kind of divided it a couple of years ago when we redid the handbook into two different categories. There are gifted and talented students, and there are extended learning opportunities. Extended learning program kind of, we defined it as an opportunity for students to ebb and flow in and out of the process based on differentiation, based on standards that they're doing well in in that moment. But gifted and talented is usually your top three to five percent, maybe a little bit higher, and those students have those specific domains. The ones that we typically focus on are the intellectual or the specific academic skills. So why we do this is because, just like in MTSS system, you have the left side, which is our targeted interventions, our tier one and two, or tier two and three, intensive and untargeted interventions for students who are not meeting proficiency. And our universal core should meet about eighty percent of those students, and you have ten, five to fifteen percent that might meet on either tier. So this is what we do for students who are in that top tier. We have intensified differentiation in the classes, and we also have specific programming designed for students who are in that top three to five percent. So acceleration meets one of those top academic needs. I split it in half because you also have the social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health side besides the academics, and so we have to tier for those kinds of concepts as well. So acceleration is a strategy of progressing through education at rates faster or ages younger than the norm. This can occur through grade skipping or single-subject acceleration. And so, grade skipping would mean that the student is academically achieving in all areas, and single-subject acceleration is where they might be achieving in one or two areas, but not necessarily all areas. We do have students who are considered twice exceptional, so they could be gifted in English and maybe getting services for special education in math, for example. So, and I know this tier is a little bit away from the sheet that I gave you, but what we did last year, we piloted with a math program. And the, it was during the pandemic, a bunch of teachers, we had talked about it for over a year, we had not come up with a specific plan, but at the end of April, beginning of May of last year, we kind of said, we need to do something for these students. And so the math department worked digitally, like remotely, and figured out students and an online program through Edgenuity that would work for students to accelerate and take courses over the summer. They started with a seventh grade group of students taking eighth grade math, and a sixth grade group of students taking seventh grade math. And so they were a small handful of students. It's on here in the previous pilot roster on one of the sides. And it said, in nineteen twenty school year, we started, oh, actually, we had some English students trying both seventh and eighth grade combined, and then in twenty twenty, it was a hundred percent remote, seventh grade math had eight students, and eighth grade math had ten students. And this year, I taught a compacted English class with seventh and eighth grade students. Well, in January, we started conversations again with all four content areas, saying, what are we wanting to do at this point in time with acceleration? Acceleration can look many different ways in many different school districts. So we came up with this plan as content groups, so like I met with math several times, and they decided they really wanted to try and get eighth grade math face-to-face. And so, this one. This one is the best way that we have come up with so far to try and accelerate small groups of students who need enrichment opportunities and different developmentally, academically appropriate education. And so, you can see on each content area, there's the traditional student path, and then there's an option one. Our option one is our first target. It's where we would like to try and catch students when they're academically ready, based on the core teachers for that content area, what they've decided. Option two is where students would, if we've missed someone, if a student moved in, if there was some other need to catch someone, there was an option two created to catch some of those students that we may have missed that deserve those opportunities. So there's each content area of what we decided this year, and kind of a flow chart on where they would go if they passed the course over the summer, and if they would not pass the course over the summer. With the pilot, last year in September, the end of September, one of the classroom teachers created a survey for the, for the students that took the course last summer, and they said eighty-six percent of them felt that Algebra I, that they were very prepared for Algebra I. So they were, one of the reasons why we started this was because they, we had a lot of students dropping out of Algebra after skipping a whole grade, and skipping a grade was not necessarily a, a good thing for some students, because you're missing core concepts. And so, when we did this, we wanted to make sure that we were evaluating how it was done, so we gave a student survey. So eighty-six percent felt prepared for Algebra I. And the one student who responded did not say they did not feel they were prepared for Algebra I, the response was that they were more prepared than before when they took eighth grade math. So there was a little comment in there. A hundred percent felt that they were understanding the math in Algebra I at that point in time of the school year. And so I wanted to make sure that we were looking at some of the results for what the students had said. This was on seven students that took it. And then here were some of the personal comments that made it, they made, and I'm not sure if you can read all those, but it was things like, it was fine, I did good. The question was, how did eighth grade math go over the summer? The summer math went pretty well for me, a lot of lessons were still pretty easy for me to do, some were more challenging, but that's the point. It went well for me. I got, if I recall correctly, over ninety percent for a final grade. It went fairly well. It went great over the summer, the program was easy to follow. It went pretty good. It was a little hard, but I liked the challenge. So those are the kind of comments that they made about doing the program of Edgenuity over the summer. And then the last one, we asked about, how is algebra going so far this year? Fun and easy and good. It's pretty easy since the summer math program, there were some more complex equations than the ones in Algebra I so far, so everything is great. I think Algebra I is going pretty well, I'm understanding the material fairly well, class is kind of fun. And so, what we established was that this was a really good process for what we were trying to accomplish. Students were not whole grade skipping, they were getting the content in a different way, but they were still learning the material and being successful in their next course. So, I left it with that, but basically, this summer, we have all four contents going, two different areas, grade levels for most of them. I put the number of students that were taking the courses on the sheet, so you could kind of see that. I did it by grade level, so currently there are six students in sixth grade that are taking summer courses, there are seven, or there are six seventh graders, three eighth graders, and one ninth grader. But then when you look at the students who were already in accelerated programs, I added a few in there, in the next section, the total student accelerated rosters. We have one student whose family I've been talking to already that has, will be moving in, that's already taken sixth, seventh grade, compacted in another district. So there's other districts doing things too, to compact and build in those skills, so we have another one added in. And then there will be an honors science class this fall, where they will be compacting the curriculum for some chemistry with their physical and, I think it was earth, science? But I could be wrong. But the science for ninth grade will be a face-to-face, because they selected so many students this year. So instead of taking it over the summer, they took the eighteen students that they selected and put them into an honors class for compacting this fall. I put on there how we looked at data. I did print out, this is one grade level of what my data spreadsheets look like, not that you can probably see it, but. There's students, numbers down the side, and all of their data for the last several years. So I have IOSS, SATs tests, the three times a year, their COBAT scores, everything that I could combine, and any time that they got above eighty percent, they went on my chart. Anytime they're above ninety percent, they go in as color-coded as a green for being exceedingly proficient in the content. So this is kind of what the data is that they look like at. So when the teachers selected the students, they don't, they do have a teacher recommendation component, but it's mostly looking at the data of those who have trend data over time for those who have been successful. So that's kind of how we look at the student data to figure out who needs to be offered these programs. I think that's kind of about it. But I'm gonna invite Lucy to have a...
So I'm doing seventh and eighth, or seventh grade math and science, and the, the videos, when I don't get my pre-test, over eighty percent are really instructional, and they help me a ton, and I feel like when I finish my things, like when, if I get this done, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna feel so accomplished in myself, so I really like this, and I think it's a really good thing for the younger kids and the older kids that do this.
And that is one thing I forgot to say, that we do have an expectation that they meet eighty percent in every single task, not just tests and assignments and quizzes. It's every single task, so every assignment has to be met with eighty percent proficiency, which was set by the teachers themselves. So eighty percent is sort of, if we were doing standards-based grading with this, that's the three, that's the proficient, and then that, if they don't hit that, then they have the opportunity to re-watch videos and instructional components, re-practice, and then retake them as well.
So just to tie in a couple of things, because I know that sometimes there's a lot that goes into this conversation. There are times when a student does not perform academically on a report card at a high level, but is still identified as gifted. So if their test scores indicate that they're successful in the academic component, they may not do well in class, and that could be for a variety of reasons. Sometimes they're bored, sometimes it's, it's something that they don't want to put effort into, I mean, there's lots of things. It might be there's, you know, disagreements with the teacher, didn't like the teaching instruction, didn't like the strategies, whatever. So we might have a student who is not on the honor roll that's in a gifted program, because their data mandates that we push them a little bit, so that they can be as successful as they, they can be. So we do see that sometimes. The, the teacher recommendation piece, obviously they're with these kids day in and day out, and so they get to know kids at a, obviously a deeper level than just what the data is, and I think that's why, that's one of those components that we still include and think it's very valuable, because they're the, they're the ones who are working with kids all the time. And, and obviously, when you're in a classroom with kids and you're giving them complex challenges, if they're in a group and they're leading that group in, in problem solving, a teacher can see that. So that's why that teacher recommendation piece, I think, is so important, because I do think it's, it's of value. The other thing that I think it's important, we, when we met with the, with the remote learning, I'm not saying that right, you'll have to give me a minute, our, yeah, remote learning.
Remote learning.
Option, we had a committee that met this spring, and some of their concerns were, how are we evaluating kids? How, if a kid is learning online, how are we evaluating their progress? And so that's feedback that we took, and, and obviously, I, last week, read an article about how cheating is rampant as a result of COVID, because everybody's on the computer and then they have their phone next to them. So we brainstormed how we can ensure that our kids who are taking these classes that are challenging, the concerns or the considerations that that committee came up with, we, we had to pay attention to that, right? I mean, it's, that's what our community values, so we went through, and we, we've set up times where kids can come in and test in the office. We also, Dr. Brown also does learning sessions where kids can come and just work, but then she also sets up time to, to learn, or to test with them. So if a kid doesn't meet that eighty percent, I have teachers that come into the district office almost, you know, once or twice a week, and come meet a student and work through learning with the student. So it's not that it's just this program, but it's supported by our teachers. And that's something that I think is really important for, for us here, because that connection, that relationship, is really important, not only for our teachers, so they, they support those kids, but for the kids who know that they have somebody that they can say, hey, Dr. Brown, I don't understand this, can you walk me through it? So I think that that feedback was valuable as we looked at this, knowing that we have to provide opportunities for kids that are at that high level. And, and how do we do that? Because we never know if it's gonna be five, or if it's gonna be twelve, or, you know, how many it is. So I appreciate you taking that feedback and really paying attention to it when you develop this with those teachers, because it, it means a lot to, to having us move forward with it, so.
And I think that's an important point that I didn't mention, is that there are, I think, six other teachers that are the content experts, because there are many courses such as biology that I am not your content person, and so to have those other teachers is really valuable. So they are doing some office hours as well, and they are fielding some of the content-related questions, so that the students do have a contact with the content expertise. I can facilitate the system and, you know, kind of set up the times for them to learn and everything, but I am not a four-content-area high school expert, so that is one good thing that we do have those volunteers to help out with the content.
I was just gonna ask, how long, I mean, like each segment, I guess, that you do? Is it every day, or how do you do?
It kind of varies. I usually offer two to three hours. I try to do about ten hours a week, so that they have those opportunities to come in and test. So originally, it was sort of scheduled between like eight and eleven, which was between, I think, speed and agility and baseball, and so now I'm, had some requests for afternoon, so sometimes it's like two to five, so it just kind of varies, and I kind of try to change it up so that I can get the most around students. I would say between two and, I think one day we had eight students, but between two and five is pretty typical, just most days.
Okay. And for what you do as a student, how much time do you put in that too?
At home, it's harder to work, so when I go to Ms. Brown's, I get a ton done, but at home, I usually put maybe an hour, an hour thirty, but that's really all. But when, at Ms. Brown's, I get so much done, and I, I just feel great about myself, because when she puts her, like, time into it, it just, I feel more set, because I'm in, at school, and I like, I need to know, I need to get this done, so I think it's really great.
She's giving me way more credit than I deserve. I'm her cheerleader.
I don't have to sit at home.
I just have to say, do you need anything?
And it's helpful, it gets me going. It's just deciding, sitting at the counter, just being frustrated, because I don't know what I'm doing, there's no teacher in the room, and I'm just sitting there and doing, like...
So my question, I guess, is, and thank you for the presentation, I really, it's very helpful. For the science, for this academic school year, you have eighteen students going into compacted, which is probably north of twenty-five percent of the class, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Which is very much an outlier, according to what you said. And is there a concerted push to push more kids towards this, or what's driving that high number? Because that's, that's almost a classroom.
It is, it is, they, that's why they decided to do it as a class, instead of having all of them doing it independently over the summer, and it's sort of compacted, it will have some chemistry components early, so it will have, they will go faster through the pace, and then add some of those extra components. So that's why it's called an honors class, because they will go deeper and do a few things more. It is an anomaly, I think that the, the reason that, well, part of the data was that we don't have science tests every year. This group of students that took science, all of them were pretty much exceeding in the advanced range this year, and that doesn't always happen. But I think that, you know, there's a lot of science curriculum, and I wish we tested them every year, but they don't have the ISASP every year for science, so I think that's one data piece. They also gave a science test in a grade younger to kind of look at some of those other pieces, but we just didn't have as many science pieces or social studies pieces, because English and math are fast, and IOSS estimates, or ISASP. So I would love to have more science and social studies pieces to kind of dig deeper into those areas, but we don't necessarily have all of those right now. But I do think that it's unusual.
So, so it is possible that there's eighteen this year, and next year it could be two?
Yes. It's gonna ebb and flow. So the first year that we did this, we had three students in English that were doing, they did a six, seven, or no, a seven, eight compact, but they went to one period, they have double blocks, so they went to one period of seventh grade English, and then they went to one period of eighth grade English. This year, with the adjustments in schedule, we were going to do the same thing, and then I ended up teaching a compacted seventh and eighth grade curriculum with ten students, or no, eight students. So it's, it's something that ebbs and flows with whatever the students are that need it, or that the teachers identify that need it. We might have no one some year, and then we might have a full class some years. So it just kind of fluctuates. We don't want to like, put people in and have them be unsuccessful, so we have conversations about, can they do this? Are the test scores showing it, the results of the data? So, it's as best as we can kind of put together right now, but we take feedback, so.
You said that students can retake the test?
Mm-hmm.
How many times?
Um, we, right now, have a limit set around five, I think, but no one, well, not many, I, I won't say no one, but many have not needed that many times. But we do allow them to go back and retake. And that's a educational philosophy that goes based on, you know, Rick Wormley and some other educators who feel like they should have those opportunities to be successful, and we want them to learn the curriculum, so why not re, have them learn the material and retest them? It comes from a test bank, so it's not always the same questions, they have a certain number of questions, some will be the same, but not all of them. And so as it filters through those test bank questions, they do have some various questions each time that they take it. Ultimately, we want them to succeed, so we have them keep relearning the material.
And Cindy, just to that, if there's a student that doesn't do well on the test, that's when the teachers typically come in and work with the student before they retest. Because you have to do, you either have to do the unit again, the learning again, watch the videos, it won't just let you click, do the test again. Do the, we have to set it, and so if we have a student that's struggling, the teacher will be in contact with that student, come in, sit down, an hour, do you feel okay? Okay, let's come back tomorrow, let's test tomorrow. I mean, so there's, there's a component of that, but there's gotta be new or additional learning before, between when they take the first assessment, when they do, when they try it again. It's not that they just keep, you know, hitting redo, redo, redo. That's, that's not how it's set up.
So it's somewhere in there that it's, then there's a notation that says this is their second time of taking it, or third time?
Students can't just take the test, we have to open it for them.
Okay.
So we keep track of what, so in our office, when they come into the district office, and then a report goes to the teacher, and it'll tell them what, what the student did, but we'll, we'll say, Cindy scored an eighty-seven percent, and so we know that that was fine. If not, Cindy scored a sixty percent, that the teacher gets notified. Typically, they're contacting that student, if you can, because the teacher can go in and look at the test and see where errors were. Typically, if it's, you know, you didn't take your time, you need to just slow down, you've got the concepts, just slow down. Or if there's some reason why, through the, through the assessment, that they can see the concepts aren't being learned, then they usually come in and work with that student, so.
But by retaking the test several times, it doesn't compromise the integrity of the data?
In what way?
Because, I mean, because you're being allowed to take it several times.
Right.
So...
That the questions are different from the test bank, right?
I mean, some are, some are.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, they start to filter through, and some do reappear. But a lot of them are about the concepts, so it, it matters if you get the concepts not, and they don't, they don't have like, previous, they aren't allowed to see the previous test answers. So they can see their test results, we can see their test results, we can see the amount of time it took, we can see every time that they've taken it, but they don't see their answers. So it doesn't provide the correct answer for them to go back and then write all...
And always have a hundred percent the second time.
Yes. And so there's, I mean, on average, some of the quizzes that are shorter, I think, are around ten questions, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong.
Quizzes are ten questions, and then the unit tests are twenty-five, the unit, unit test reviews are fifteen, and then the cumulative exam for science are forty, I think, no, forty, yeah, wait, fifty, or fifty.
So there's quite a few questions that it pulls from, and it provides those opportunities. And so they can't just sit down and write down all the answers, it also changes the order of the answers. It changes, it mixes things up. And so Edgenuity provides us with a lot of different options, but it gives us every detail of what they're doing as well. And I know that Edgenuity has quite often been a credit recovery program for, for schools and stuff, but there are already curriculums in there that are honors courses and AP courses and those kinds of things, and they do align to standards, which is something I forgot to mention, but the teachers did align the course content with their coursework standards. And so they are matching, they may not be like, in an English class, it may not be the same reading passage, but the standards are the same as what they're doing in their classroom.
And you mentioned there was a transfer student?
Yeah, we have a couple of students that are coming in next year that have already reached out to me, and one, like, one of them has already taken a six, seven compacted class, and so they will be a year advanced, so that student will be able to join the rest of our students in that accelerated, well, they'll, they'll be a year advanced in math class. I came from a school district that also did compacted classes, they tiered them, like, kind of like we tried to do them, where six, seven was compacting in, in a math class, seven, eight was compacted for English, eight, nine was compacted for science. So there's lots of different ways. One of the notes that I had on there is that it's all GT things are local control, so what happens at one district doesn't, isn't always the same in another district, but we do have to provide opportunities. And so this was what we felt was the best opportunity for our students at this time.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Give them all to Lucy.
Well, thank you very much, that was a very in-depth presentation. We, no, that's a good...
It's only one area, don't want the other domains and concepts, because we can keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to the open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak...
Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting, a speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask that people, that speakers, remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. Did we have anybody sign up? I did notice we had some people come in after we'd started, are they interested in addressing the board tonight? All right. Student representative report. Yeah, I saw that too. Where, is he at basic training, is that what he's boot camp right now, so?
Yeah, we do not have a report. Yeah.
So, so is this an excused absence then, for him?
Yes.
I, I, I think it's commendable what he is doing and I certainly appreciate his service, so. We are now moving into the principal reports, Mr. Castor, go right.
Okay, I'm slated to give a presentation here on our standards-based grading practice. And so I, I'll, I'll go through this again, we've been through it once about, about eight days ago. We will do it again in July and we will also do it in August, on August fifth, when we come back to school. But wanted to give everybody an opportunity again to just see the work that we have done with this. This is updated with some feedback that we have gotten from our first presentation. So I, I'm always appreciative of that feedback and we, we will continue to adjust as we get feedback or, or see need for changes. So we'll just, we'll go ahead and get started. We established goals for the, for the informational session. The first goal is to share the rationale for why. The second is to strengthen that communication piece between families and the school regarding these grading practices. The beliefs of the grading practices, the primary purpose for the grading at Interstate thirty-five is to communicate information about the student's achievement to students, parents, and others involved. I think, I think Steph, what Stephanie just talked about is a great example of how we can communicate what students are, are knowing about the standards and how they can continue to move forward in their growth and understanding. So that's really where that other piece would come into play there. The additional purposes are included in the bullets there, provide evidence of individual student progress towards the academic standards, provide opportunities for students to self-assess, reflect and set goals, and provide parents with accurate and meaningful evidence of their students' growth and learning. Some terms here that are just, they're, I call them standard terms for us because they're, they're more educational-based, but standard, which is also referred to for us as a power standard, I can, I can define what that looks like momentarily, but an academic standard are what public stu- school students are expected to learn in reading, math, and other subjects. Each core subject or each subject that, that is taught in school has a set of standards that they operate under. For example, the state has created a set of English, math, science, social studies standards, whereas the CTE classes such as industrial tech, ag, family consumer science generally operate under a national standard just because the state has not gone in and created that set of standards for them because it does look so different in every school. So, but each subject does have a set of standards which they operate under. We as a district have identified priority standards that will, that, that is what will be known or the students will be measured on during their time in the classroom. Practice is also referred to as homework. Assessment is a means of determining a student's understanding of a tool. This is the term that's commonly misinterpreted because people see assessment and they automatically think test. And you go to this pencil and paper test from when you were in school that has three hundred math problems and you're timed and that's what the score is you're going to get. That, that looks very different for us in, in all of our classes, so it could look in the form of a presentation or written paper or projects. Now, there, there is the area that needs a traditional test, but again, they, it can look in many different forms. GPA stands for grade point average. The rubric, or a rubric is a means of, a means to provide feedback to students based on their unit assessment. So the example problem that I put in here, there are four questions in a math problem or on a math, this could be a very formative assessment to check for understanding for students. So there are four problems, two of these problems are based on one standard, two of them are based on another standard. So if we're doing a check for understanding for the class, this gives us a quick, easy measurement to know that problems one and three hit this standard, problems two and four hit the second standard. When you talk about real-world problems versus the volume of figures, those are two areas that can be taught within one unit of, of study for the students. So if the teacher takes a look at the data, what does it tell you? This is a data review of, of the assessment to know how to best support your students. So if, if the teacher looks at the overall class data and sees fifty percent of the students didn't understand the first standard, but a hundred percent understood the second standard, okay, we got it, let's, let's, let's go back and revisit that first standard if we need to. Is it wording within the problem, is it that they truly just can't apply what they know? So the, the teacher can take that data and set a course of action for planning within their classroom. That's, that's really what the purpose is of that data that we're collecting is for, for the teachers to know where their students are at and then also communicating that information home to the students and the parents. So if you're a student that got all four, then we need to talk about what's next for you when it comes to the next day's lesson potentially, because we don't want to hold you back from your learning as well, we want you as that individual who gets it. Then we can either look for other opportunities to apply that knowledge or if you're a student who may not understand it, maybe we're a small group working in the back of the room so that we can go back and revisit some of those skills and reassess again. That's the, that's the information that it's telling the students. As a parent, you can continue to monitor your student, same as you've monitored them in years past with their progress and their understanding. I think the piece that it's, that, that it gives as a parent, and as a parent myself, I think it gives, gives targeted information. So when I'm having conversations with Aiden at home, I can talk specifically about an area that, that maybe I can help him or at least find opportunities, okay, if we're talking about area, here's, here's how you determine the area of, of a house, whether it's inside or outside or whatever, those are things that, that I as a parent can build into conversations at home to help, help my student learn in a specific targeted area. Whereas previously, when you would look at a grade book, you would see unit four. Well, what does unit four, what, what are they talking about in that unit? So this gives us a little more targeted information there. So does our current practice show a student's true understanding of standards? Here's an example of a, of a grade book, and again, this is an example, not one of our grade books, but this is an example. When you're looking at data in this sort of setting, as a teacher, you're looking across left to right to see how student one through seven are doing. General understanding would be what is listed over on the left-hand side, so student one is improving, student two's data is showing that they're declining, three is consistent, so on down the line. But when we look at the average of all of those students, those students as a whole show that they have a seventy-nine percent. All of those average out to seventy-nine percent, although we've put labels on them based on their data that shows. So the advantage for us, or one of the, the nice things about standards grading is it will, it'll actually help the teacher calculate these trends within their classroom because they can look at a standard specifically for the whole class and do a, a very general trend calculation, just like you're looking at here, so that they can see in real time where their whole class is at as they're planning for, for that. But this is just a, an overall look at, as a quick snapshot, we see a lot of different numbers there, some high numbers, some lower numbers, but sometimes that perception is, is tough to see. That's just seven students. When, when you're in a, a high school math classroom, you could potentially have a hundred and twenty total students in an Algebra I class. So when looking at seven, it's tough, a hundred and twenty might be obviously even, even tougher to take a look at. So this is a, a view from our current grade book. This is, this is a, an actual student example that I went in and got out of the grade book. So you can see, when you look at a specific class, we will still generate a letter grade and percentage for each of those classes. This is, this is directly from Power School as an example. So what, what will change within that is what you're going to be able to see when you start clicking into that information. So if yours, if you're a parent that just wants to monitor the overall achievement of your student, you can see whether they have an A through an F at any point in time during the semester for your student by clicking, by logging into Power School as you have done every other year that I've been a part of the district. So none of that piece is gonna change. What will change for us is when you dig down into that and you see what is the assessment that is being graded, you will see the assignment and then you will also see the standards under that assignment. So you'll be able to see, previously, you would see that top section where it would give you assignment, World War II assessment, and a score that's generated from that. What you'll see now is you'll see those standards underneath here, you'll see the assignment name and then the standard underneath there. So you can see they are, they're developing in one area and they have hit the standard with a three in the other area. So what will happen over time are these standards. So nine ELA one will be measured multiple times throughout the semester and the measurement of that standard will average to whatever the final grade is for the student. So this will give us a quick snapshot of where they're at in the moment under that assessment so that as we're watching our students develop, those numbers should ultimately continue to rise for us as their understanding, again, continues to develop. So when you're looking at this as a semester, this would be on a semester view with the example of grade nine or English for grade nine up here on the board. You've got standards one through ten. The standards that have a number next to them are the, the priority standards or the power standards that have been identified by the teacher. So those have been measured multiple times throughout the semester and this is the average score for, for this specific student in this example. At the, at the end, again, these are, these are averaged together, so standard one through ten will be averaged to generate a letter grade based on whatever the average of those, of those standards are. The reason for that is we don't want to set a priority that one standard is more important than the other, so we've not said that standard one will carry a weight of, of so-and-so whereas standard two is this. They're, they're all equal in, as in importance for us as determined by the, the content group. So the English department have determined what their priority standards are and we just, we, we weight them all equally. You know, the, Tom Schimmer is a, is a standards-based grading, I'll call him a guru, I don't know him personally, but he has produced a lot of good material when it comes to, when it comes to explaining. But I thought this quote, "Changing grading practices doesn't mean that the practices of the past were wrong necessarily, rather they're wrong in today's context. What we used to do was right for how we used to teach, but we don't teach like that anymore." So the idea of continuing to evolve our practice and making sure that we are accurately grading the understanding of our students, I think is the, the greatest takeaway for me, especially with this, because we do teach in a lot of project, we teach in a lot of, of practical application type setting now, whereas, whereas previously, it was more of a, a sit and get opportunities for students and the way to measure that was through a pencil and paper type test. Again, just to recap the beliefs, I won't read down through those again, but it does, it does cover the, the same three bullets that we discussed earlier. Rationale for changing the grading status quo. Correlation studies indicate that our grades do not reflect our level of achievement on measures such as the ACT and AP assessments. Different grading book, grades and gradebook setups within courses and department leading, lead to grading inequities. Parent and students have reported disparities in grading practices such as having redos, retakes, late penalties, extra credit within the courses and department. And then, of course, this grading practice will eliminate those, those disparities from being within the, the, the grade book. Here's a couple comparison or chart comparisons as to what, what it looks like on an A through an F scale as compared to a zero through one hundred scale. When you're talking about how do we place a student or how do we know how to best support a student, the idea of, of having a student in a one through four, one, zero through four opportunity would be an example compared to that top graph. I think we, by doing this, we would have a much greater understanding of the student's knowledge as compared to looking at it from a zero to a one hundred standpoint. This shows it as the idea of, of passing versus failing. But really, when you get down to it, it's what does the student know and how do we best support that student to help them continue to develop their understanding? And that's easier done with, with a four-point system than it is for a hundred-point system. Again, this, this shows a correlation of the zero to one hundred. The idea is if a student does no work, he or she should get nothing, not something worth more than nothing. So how instructive is it to tell a student that he's earned six times less than absolute failure? Choose to, choose to be instructive, not punitive. And I think that's the piece that, that is going to be important for us, is that we're taking the opportunity to be instructive to our students, helping them understand where they are and what the plan is to move forward and not that they look at a test and see an F or see a, see a zero there. They, they know where they're at and they know where they're going and same as every other support that's around them in the district and at, and at home, they know the same thing. So what is changing versus what is not? Again, this is just a cross comparison between the two. What is changing, the, the common philosophy between the five twelve? The use of common four-point scales and score assignments, grading scale of, of one hundred points, and then consistent Power School gradebook practices. What is not changing, we will not change the letter grade system or how GPA is generated. Transcripts will still be generated for our students, the RAI index is for us to execute, not make up, so we will not change anything with the RAI, that's already determined for us. And then scholarship opportunities for students will, will again remain as they have any, any other year because those are commonly based on GPA or, you know, class rank, which we will still generate. So those, those opportunities will not change for students either. So this has been our biggest evolution for, for us in this, in this process, but this, how do we determine letter grade versus scale score versus GPA? The one column on here that I, that I believe will go away eventually, which causes confusion for some when they're looking at that, is the percentage column. I left it on here for, for a visual, but that percentage is what has traditionally been correlated with the letter grade. So if you will earn an A in a class, you're gonna earn between ninety-four and a hundred percent. That's just, that's what has been set up in the Power School and the grade book. So I wanted you to see how that worked through with a scale score as well as how it compares to a GPA. When, when this, as this practice continues to evolve for us, that, I do believe that column will go away because some people look at it now and say, what does the percentage mean? Well, I left it in there for people to see how that still correlates or what's been done previously as compared to what it does now. So again, that's just the portion of evolution there. But this, this GPA determination and where it's at as compared to a letter grade is, has been the part that has evolved for us and this is what was in Power School previously. So we wanted to make sure that it was in as, as current practice so that students that are moving or continue to move through our system aren't graded in some sort of in, inequality as compared to what they have been in years past. So it's, it's exactly the same as it comes out of Power School as it exists today and has been in years previous. So that, that just helps people understand where they're at when it comes to GPA as it compares to scale score. And that's, of course, final semester scale score to determine that GPA. Just a couple of questions, this is all in our FAQ document as well, but can my student still earn an A in a class using a four-point scale? Of course, that, that answer is yes, but this, the same is true whether you're in a class that uses a four-point scale or total points calculation. This just, I think this chart I would refer back to would be the previous page when we determined letter grades. The, the question is, is the student, you know, when, when they're going through the, the semester or through a class, are they proactive, are they taking proactive measures to ensure that they are achieving the grade that they're wanting to earn? So if they come in and they score a two on an assessment, are they reassessing? Are they finding out what other opportunities exist for them to show their understanding in that? Or if they earn a three, is it okay for a three? Or if they earn a three, is it okay for a three to redo or reassess for a four? That answer would be yes. Students, if they wanna move that grade up, same as a student that scores a zero that wants to get a passing grade of a two, uh, they, they have those opportunities. So yes, of course, it's okay for them to go in and, and reassess or re, redo because it's, it's about that learning. It's about a student showing their, their acquisition of the knowledge. Uh, my students earning a two on us, on some skills, should I be worried? Um, earning a two on a four-point scale means that students are approaching proficiency on a key priority standard for the class. In the middle of, of the semester, this is entirely appropriate and, and probably going to be one of those common questions that we get uh, throughout the year and that's, that's okay. But it's important to know that the idea is to make sure that the students understand and can, can show their learning throughout the course of the semester. If all students come in and get assessments uh, of fours the first time around, I think that would be a miracle for us. We want kids to continue to progressively learn through the semester. Not that we need to make it increasingly harder, but we need to make sure that they have the appropriate um, knowledge and they can demonstrate the knowledge for, so that they can earn the grade that they, they uh, deserve. Uh, again, the bottom bullet there, any concern about progress? Reach out to your teacher, same as you, as, as parents have done for, for again, many years before myself even. If you have questions about your student progress, that, that first point of contact should be to the teacher. If I get into a gradebook and I see that Aiden has a two on something, I would reach out to the teacher and say, help me understand what makes up this grade if it doesn't make sense to me as a parent. Uh, because I want, I want either to be able to help my student know what needs to happen to move forward or know when the next opportunity would be to, to show their understanding. But the teacher's gonna be that, that person who writes the test, creates the rubrics or creates the assessment, creates the rubric so that the student understands. And then it's about that process of information. Uh, does this mean I-35 is implementing? This, this part for us, the answer is ultimately yes. We've defined that we're gonna work with our staff and with our teachers over the first semester to generate an understanding of what that looks like within their classrooms. We do that through the standard or through the understand by design process when it comes to unit planning. Uh, but I think our PD plan for next year has laid that out very nicely. We've met with each of the curricular teams so they understand where they need to go uh, and are going to go with their, with their planning moving into next school year. Uh, we've got a plan to meet all departments where they're at, not, not where we're going to force them to be at the beginning of the year. We wanna get them the, the knowledge and the training that they need through first semesters so that they're ready to go uh, for second semester starting in January of 2022. Um, any questions about this? Uh, I've of course put my contact information on there, but uh, ultimately wanted to see if there were any questions that the board had or I'm sure I far exceeded my time. Jeff's pacing up there, I'm certain. Uh, but if you guys have any questions based on that, you're certainly welcome to reach out or we can take some of those now.
So I've heard of Marzano when you were talking, probably, I don't know how many years ago, but how long has this been in process?
Yeah. Overall process, I don't know if I have a, a gauge as to when the conversation began, but of, of conference school, Earlham uh, has been in this practice since 2014. I think is the year that, when I talked to Jen Knight about that. So that's been some time ago, seven years now that that practice has happened within our own conference. As far as being out there, Sharon and I would default to you. I don't know that I have that exact date. It's been around a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, there's not an exact date. Around 2000, 2002, we started, when, when the push came for, for schools to um, work through Iowa Core Standards.
Mm-hmm.
So when we got kind of, it used to be schools could have local control over the standards. So you could determine at the local level what each grade was gonna teach in each content area. And then we had what I would call the standards movement um, across really the country. And so when the core standards came out, Iowa adopted those, but then modified them to meet the needs of Iowa schools. And so that work has been happening since early 2000. And then as we saw that, we realized that there might have been a, a, there's a better way to provide feedback around that, around the standards, not necessarily just an assignment. And so I think it's been evolving and it could well even be well before that. But that's when we've seen it in Iowa since about 2002, 2004.
Got it. And I-35 specifically, I know we implemented a pilot last year, but this has been more than just last year, right?
Yeah, so we've been, we've been working on identifying power standards, beginning to, to identify assessments for those standards and creation of rubrics for uh, about the last three years. It would have been when we very first targeted that unpacking of standards. So this is, this is just the next, the next step for us in that implementation process.
Got it. And then this is just how we grade the kids. It's not, doesn't change anything with a student with an IEP or anything like that.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it, so I've got a handbook that goes with this as well that we'll, uh, we'll put on. I've got some updating that I need to do to it, but there's a section in there for uh, support services. So it talks specifically about IEPs or 504s or uh, gifted kids that have a PEP together for themselves. So um, yeah, it, it does not affect them any differently than it does any other student. Yeah.
Okay. And the last question I promised was, so I think there was a lot of confusion, me included. You know, you're transferring from a zero to 100 to a zero to four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how many observations are gonna be in the zero to four, right? Cause you always had to, in order to get a GPA, we had to convert from a zero to 100 to 3.2 or 2.7. But if you have enough observations within ones through fours, aren't you gonna get to the same outcome, right?
Yeah.
It, it's just, it's confusing though. It doesn't, it's easier to get smaller, it's harder to get bigger because it's, it's just the way my mind works, right? It's always been A, B, C, D.
Sure. And ultimately, you'll still be able to see that A, B, C, D because that's calculated on the backend through Power School. So i- if that's what you, if that's what you wanna see as a parent, um, and not just you specifically, Eddie, but any parent. I think there's, I think there's different levels of informed parents. There's some that want to just know, are you passing school today? That's the goal for today. Tomorrow might be a little different. So um, what, what do we need to know in the moment? And then there's parents who want to be in the trenches with their kids so they can support them along the way and you can get that information as well. So that's the, that's the, the nice pieces. It provides a little tiered levels for parents as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So you did one parent presentation already?
Yep.
What was the feedback?
So I, I had uh, I don't even remember how many questions we had that night. Uh, we'll say 15 off the top of my head. Um, I took those questions and I made sure those questions were answered within the FAQ document so that they were um, they were answered, number one, and anybody else that wanted to know about them could, could see the, whatever the feedback was within that one document. So we didn't have a whole bunch of documents. Um, I heard, I heard from each of those parents. I, I think there were three that I needed to get back to to provide some other information for um, appreciative of the information. Um, I got, I got back to them the next day. So I think overall the feedback was good.
Do you feel it brought more clarity to the whole SVG conversation?
Um, I think so. I think that's a fair question to those parents that were here. Um, and that, and none of them are here, I don't, I don't think tonight. But they, I, I believe that it did, yes. Um, so even the one that had a question about how a letter grade was, was determined, I thought I knew the answer, but I said, let me double check to make sure I, I know that for sure. Um, just appreciated that I took a look at it and got back to them. So yes, I think it, it provides a clarity. The biggest question came around how that GPA was determined. Um, and I think once we got to a common understanding there and that, that really was done before that meeting even happened because we got some good feedback throughout the week. Um, I think that helped eliminate a lot of question and concern from, from parents.
So Steve, do we have more informational meetings coming up?
Yeah, we've got one July 15th, I think. I don't remember, 13th um, is the date and uh, August 5th. Or, and both, both are, I believe there's six o'clock start times and here in the auditorium. So they'll be very, they're gonna be the exact same presentation that you saw here tonight. Um, again, to take questions from parents as those come about and I'll continue to answer those, of course, throughout the summer if they email uh, prior to that. But yeah, about two more weeks, we have another one and then a follow-up in August.
Uh, I guess I just, I did attend the parent meeting. I, I thought there was some good interaction, good questions. Um, I see your presentation has evolved a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Very, very good and I'm sure it'll probably evolve more if we get a new group of parents in.
Yeah.
I, I hope they're well attended.
Yeah.
You know, this is important for everybody to understand and get educated on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Was there more to your report tonight?
Uh, I've got three pages left, Jeff. No, I'm just kidding. Um, no, you know, we, we've spent a lot of, a lot of time, I'll say we spent a lot of time together at least once a week in our admin meetings that we've been coming together and, you know, planning for next school year. I'm sure Sharon will hit on it in her board report, but I think we've got a good game plan moving into the next school year when it comes to how we're supporting teachers uh, coming off the, the pandemic year. So um, I, I don't, I don't know that I have much more to add other than what's gonna be shared later uh, because I've been a part of that too. But I, I feel like we're in a good place getting ready to start again for next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Castor. Mr. Tessa.
Sharon, you gotta push your blue button again to make your computer come up.
All right, how are we doing tonight? Do I have volume? There we go. All right. Um, I don't have a whole lot. Obviously, it's the middle of summer and uh, um, our big thing that we have going on is summer school kicked off today. Um, is our first day of that. We had 87 different kids that were signed up for. It's down a little bit last, from last year, but we kind of expected that. I think a lot of families wanted to, to get uh, their kids in school last year after being out for a while. So last year we were over 100. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but we're at 87 this year. Um, nice solid uh, groups of kids, pretty much well spread out between preschool, kindergarten, first grade and second grade. Third, fourth are a little bit lower, so we did combine those into one group. Um, but they started off today and, and uh, we have seven days of that. It will be on Mondays and Wednesdays from eight to 11, um, except for July 5th. We did take that day off the calendar with it being the day after the 4th. Um, our numbers that were, kids were signed up were a lot lower. Um, I couldn't find anyone that wanted to work that day for some reason, so we just took that day off. Um, and then it is closed, the one week that the daycare is closed. I believe that's the week of July 12th. Um, the daycare's closed and, and they're, they are very critical with um, helping that all run smoothly. Um, so I wanna make sure to thank Kristen for help, her help with that um, and, and getting the snacks ordered. Um, that's an important part of, of everyone's day is, is snack time. So we wanna make sure that we have um, the thank you going out to her and, and her daycare workers that are helping make that program a success. So um, and then the other thing I wanted to kinda just let you know, I, it's gonna be coming out in the summer Roadrunner report, but I wanted you guys to have a little heads up. Um, as we kinda talk about our grading practices with the elementary, we're gonna be looking at um, switching to trimesters for our report cards for next year. Um, it just aligns a lot better with what we have for some of our assessments. Um, classes like, well, our, our fast test um, is a three-time-a-year assessment, fall, winter, spring. Our gold is a three-time-a-year assessment, fall, winter, spring. We have some other ones that kinda fit within that. Um, so having our trimesters, our, our grading um, points being at uh, the one-third and the two-third and the end-of-the-year marks um, will align a lot better with some of those assessments as well as parent-teacher conferences. Um, one of our struggles we've had um, in recent years is, is the timing of our first parent-teacher conference is well after first quarter is over, but well before second quarter ends. And so we don't have a nice current report card to, to present parents um, because we, we're way between grading points. Um, so trimesters will align a lot better with parent-teacher conference dates. So we'll have that, here's your trimester one. And from, for our sake, from the elementary, it's really just why, when do we record that data point? Um, uh, one of the other concerns that some teachers have had is with the start of the school year, especially when you're dealing with kindergarten, first grade, a lot of the standards that they're working on and a lot of the, the um, practices they're working on is really just how to be a student. Um, how do you learn, you know, remember how to sit in your seat while the teacher is teaching? How do we walk in a straight line? How do we do a lot of those things? So that, that quarter one report card really seems like it comes up quick. And the teachers are struggling to, to, to determine what standards have been assessed up to that point. Um, so by pushing that off to a trimester date, which would be in November sometime, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, um, it would allow them more time to really get into some of those standards um, so that they have data points to actually record. So um, it's a minor change. It really just affects again, when those report cards go out and they'll align better with parent-teacher conferences. Um, so those are the big pieces. Um, and as always, if a parent has concerns or questions, they're always able to reach out to a teacher at any time um, to get any of those questions answered. So um, I did wanna just kinda give you guys that information before it rolls out in the, the Roadrunner report, so. Other than that, I'm just making progress towards, towards next year. It's hard to believe, it's almost July already, but here we are and summer's flying and summer school's in session, so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tessa? Not hearing any, thank you for your report and we'll move to the superintendent's report.
So um, first thing I'm gonna do is give a facilities update. Uh, we always have a lot going on in the summer. Uh, but the roof replacement um, over the JV locker rooms and the resting rooms is complete. So that is done. Um, I think if you remember, we have the, the long part of the I in the, of the high school and the north wings of the high school that we'll have to do next year. And that, two years ago was a $400,000 um, ticket. So we've been working on what that looks like so we can look at our PPL and our save money to be ready for that one because we know that'll be next year's. Um, a lot of this, while not glamorous, is maintenance of what we have to keep our facilities um, high quality. So that is complete. The blonde wall or the brick wall that was over the elementary that would have a snow pileup behind it and then cause leaking has been removed. That is from the grant that we wrote and were approved for the, I think it was an $80,000 um, daycare grant because the rooms right under that are our daycare rooms. So we are extending our daycare rooms to two more rooms um, to allow for the number of kids that we had, the increase this year. So we're supplying them with supplies and materials and, and things like that. Um, but it was also to redo that room and then to update the carpet and things that needed to be cleaned up in the, the actual physical room. So that is in process. Um, lettering on the buildings, hopefully you've seen it. Um, we have a couple more sites that we have lettering that are, they're in the process of making. So right out on the front of the auditorium, which would be over here, behind the lights, we'll have lettering there. It says I-35 schools. We'll have signage for the high school entrance and then we'll have signage at the um, daycare, uh, the early childhood on the east end of the building and um, the CTE building. So that's still yet to be put up. Some of it had to be reconfigured because of the, the weight of the letter and then the, the surface. And they wanted to make sure that they were compatible. So some of it they're redoing, but that should be finished within the next um, couple of months. Uh, classroom remodeling, we are, um, we had two really relatively small special ed classrooms in the high school and we've converted those into a larger room that we can use for business education. Um, and that allows for our tech department to be in one location, one central location and organized so we can have some efficiencies in, you know, turnaround time for getting computers fixed and um, taking care of some of that stuff. So that's kind of a, a summer project. Um, we have air conditioning in two sections of the elementary is in progress of being put in. If you remember right, we have nine phases of that and we did phase one and two last summer. Um, we're slated to do three, four and five this summer. But I do wanna visit probably at the July meeting um, because one of the things that we're able to do with that air conditioning is get fresh air circulation into the rooms with those systems. And so um, that I think would be an effective use of some of our ESR money that we have. And I'll talk a little bit about more of what we wanna do with some of that. So um, we might be able to do a few more sections depending on materials. Right now, it seems like the world of construction, um, getting materials in is somewhat of a challenge. So we'll see what that can look like, but we can do things over, you know, Thanksgiving break, Christmas break. Um, so maybe by next spring we'll have most, if not all of it, complete. So I think that will be a welcome really for our students and our teachers. Um, we did some chain leak fencing. A guard in front of the baseball dugouts for safety reasons. Uh, we've removed some trees. The gym floors have been recoded. Um, we're obviously doing the interiors of the classrooms and that usually consists of a thorough clean, um, cleaning the vents, extracting the carpets, if there's carpets in there, waxing the floors if there's wax in there. So there's always, um, a list outside. You can go outside any door. There's a list and what needs to be done in those rooms and then the checkoff of when they get completed. So that's, um, right in the thick of it right now. Uh, we've had metal sheeting installed in our CTE, which is long overdue, so we can go up with some of our equipment out there. Um, that'll be nice. And we're looking at our greenhouse construction. The last, again, we were waiting on, uh, materials to come in. Um, and I think it's scheduled to arrive in July. So, um, with hopefully good weather and, and some, some support volunteers possibly from the community, we'll get that greenhouse up and ready to go for August. Uh, and then obviously continuing upkeep on the grounds. So a lot going on this summer. So if you have questions, I can answer them or, or talk to Rick about them.
I've got a couple here. Um, how many daycare rooms do we now have?
We currently have two.
And we're adding two more?
Correct.
The, the lettering, by the way, does look nice. Um, I was anxious for that to happen. And then I just want to say thanks to our, our crew who's working on the building this summer. It always li- it always amazes me how fast they tear it apart and it stays tore apart and then how fast it goes back together. So, yeah, I've always been amazed by that. So I just think everybody's doing a great job.
Other questions about the facilities? Okay. Um, the next thing, one of the things that I think has been kind of a constant communication from public, um, from teachers, from administrators, um, is, kind of, what are we doing about communication? And this year, uh, exceptional, we know that. But we, I tried to figure out what, what models or what methods would make sense and how can we do it more frequently? So that if something comes up in the community, I mean, if you, if you're watching any news, you've probably heard of critical race theory. If you're watching, um, anything about the budget, you're probably hearing about, um, what appropriations have been made to, to education and which ones haven't. So you can see what some of the priorities are from legislators, from the governor, from, you know, families or advocates. So I think the, the challenge is, is how do we get that communication out? We don't have necessarily a newspaper that serves just our school. And so what I've done is I've, I've sent out a survey and I just asked, how can we communicate more effectively or, or more often around topics, maybe national level, state level, local level, that people either have questions about or they have concerns about. And so we talked about three different options or three different things. One of them is to do, um, like a Roadrunner report each month. And I've worked with the Tri-Corner Express, which goes to every mailing address and interstate thirty-five schools. And we're going to do two pages of the Roadrun report each month. And that comes out around the fifteenth of the month. So it'll come out two weeks after the board meeting and two weeks before the next board meeting. So we'll have two avenues of communication in, in theory each month for people who have questions or concerns or, um, things that they want, celebrations, really anything. So I've been working with, um, New Virginia City actually owns that. And so I've been working with them. They're gonna get us the templates to do the layout, so we can just send them the layout and it can have, um, events that are coming up. It can have recognitions. It can have, you know, if there's a question that comes from the community that we want to provide more information on or, or just education on, we can do that in that, um, in that publication. So that's one option. The other, um, was to use kind of the superintendent report. So if we get lots of questions from the community, if I, if you get questions that you think would apply to the whole community, that would be good to have kind of a conversation around. They're really not things for board action, just where do we stand on those issues? We can talk about them, um, kind of in the superintendent report of the board meeting. Uh, and, and so we can answer maybe questions that people, that, that they have either heard somewhere is happening, uh, maybe something that's happening here that somebody's heard, so we can maybe clarify things before, um, e-either misinformation or, you know, maybe not misunderstanding is, is happening. So, um, I want to use some of this for, for that. Obviously, it's dependent on you sending me those topics, so we can get the information ready for the meeting. But, um, that's, that's another avenue that we're going to do. And then finally, we talked about, you know, I, and I think this year was exceptional, but just having a chance for people to meet and visit about some of this. And so, um, we're gonna do some, I, I don't know what you, I mean, we haven't come up with a really clever name yet, because that's not my wheelhouse. But, um, you know, just discussions. So if you want to talk with the administrators about critical race theory, what is it? How does it apply? Do we use it? Do we not? What is, what is the, what is the talk about? We can meet and just visit about it too. So we can, so we get an understanding of maybe what the concerns are and then we can also explain either how or how it's not being used in school. So I think that there's, um, and that we won't do probably every month. We'll try, maybe do one a quarter. Um, see how it goes, make it really pretty informal, but just to get to know people. Um, I think that's one of the challenges from this last year is we just didn't have visitors in the building. We were very limited and, um, you know, kind of having meetings or, um, outside people in. So hopefully that'll, that'll help with some of it. Um, and, and just, um, help us to move forward with that communication. We'll still do our social media. We've had a lot of feedback on, um, having things on Twitter and on Facebook and all of that. So I think that those are all still really good avenues. So, we'll try those. We'll send a survey out again, um, to see if, if we're more effective with it and, and what we could do even different. So, um, we're making progress on that. Yes. 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 Yes.
So how are downloads for the app going? I know it was kind of spiked, right?
Mr. Tessa?
Oh, I shouldn't have put you on the spot, Jeff.
He was sleeping up there. Downloads for the, downloads for the app, how are we doing on, um, the app? I know that Julie gave us a report about two, three months ago, maybe? Can we get that for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can follow up with that. I don't remember what the numbers off the top of my head. It was five hundred, maybe, between the app, iOS and Android. But I can double-check. Um, I'm not even sure where she got those numbers from, if they were just being sent to her directly from App to G or if she is able to look those up somewhere. So I'll find that out and get it back to you.
Got it. Thank you. And then in number three, I think, um, is there a way to, I mean, you can't, we might have to post it as a meeting, but then we do have board members available too, right? So we-
Or we might just offer one or two of you to come for, for meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, because I think that's a great way for community to get to know you as well. But it just, um, but I wouldn't do all of you. Well, I think all the topics will be educational-based though. That's where you're gonna have a challenge. So it might just be one or two that say, I can come to this one and then two more volunteer for the next one. And, I mean, we'll, we'll work it out. I, I don't-
Thanks.
Okay, um, the ESR two and ESR three funds, these are both federal dollars that came to us um, as a result of COVID. We have, um, specific categories that we have to use them for and code them with, um, as with really anything from the federal government. Um, and so one of the things that we need is, um, public feedback, because obviously this directs your, your students specifically. Um, things that we've earmarked already that, that we've used this for. Um, we kept the daycare open last year, uh, when we had, um, the pandemic. And so to offset the costs, we didn't have a, we weren't at full capacity. So to offset the costs, we can use ESR funds to offset that. We have it being used for summer school to help with learning loss, so families can have kids come to summer school. I know Jeff talked about our K-four, but we have that through twelfth grade, so students can come in for summer school. Uh, we have that for, um, the company that we use, um, we've talked about our janitorial services and we've had, um, lots of brainstorming about what that can look like. We actually have two companies that we contract with because we've had, um, job postings for custodial services for the last year and a half and very few applicants. So, um, we, we can't ask our staff to carry the burden of not having qualified applicants apply. So we've contracted with two different companies. One works primarily in the elementary, um, wing and does that cleaning. They're not hired for the summer, but during the school year, they come in each night and do that section. And then we have another company that comes in and does the high school. The staff that's here does, um, like, uh, events, making sure that our main areas are all done, um, and supplies things for events and make sure that if garbage needs to be taken out for a basketball game, all that stuff is taken care of. So, and then they do the middle school. We still have those jobs open, so if you know anybody that would like a job, that is one of the things that we, um, we are still working on. But, uh, so we have the, the cleaning services. We had extra cleaning for this last year that are included in this. We did include, um, the possibility of air conditioning for our COVID money, really for the air circulation and ventilation. And then we also have our health associate, so not our, our, not our RN, but the associate that we use. Um, having that person on staff as well for the next couple of years, simply because we're asking parents to take on a role of keeping kids home if they're not feeling well. We've always asked that. But I think right now we're in a, in a little different culture around that. And so if we've got a kid that's not feeling well and maybe has symptoms of COVID, we want to keep them still isolated until the parent decides, you know, what, what next for them. So that's, that's something that we'll have, you know, the nurse and the associate working together on that. We have a couple of our, um, programs. So Schoology, which is our learning management system, is part of this, um, ESR funds. We can use it for this. Um, we have interventionists, so additional teaching staff that we've hired at the middle school and the high school to help with some of that learning loss throughout the whole year. So they're, they're not just necessarily summer school, but they're here to support kids beyond and so through the whole school year. So those are the, the ideas of what we want to spend the funds on. Um, if you remember, our SR two funds were about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, and our S three funds were about five-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. We can use these for the next, they have to be used by twenty-twenty-four. So what we've done is we've just allocated, okay, if we have two interventionists for starting this next year and then what their salary is for the next three years, we reduce that. And then we look at, okay, if we had, we don't have a daycare payment anymore, because we just did that one time, so that comes off the table. But we still have a health associate, so what does that look like? And then we take that off. So when we look at those numbers, um, we think we can probably use those funds for things like finishing air conditioning with air circulation and air quality, um, in more of the building, probably sooner than we thought we could, um, without them. But the community needs to get us feedback around these over the course of the next two or three weeks. Um, because we will start to schedule some of this and, and we'll bring it to you guys as well, obviously, just what the, um, what the actual plan is and how we're allocating those specific dollars, so you can see it as well and give feedback. And, um, it is a requirement that we do that. Also, we have to have a return-to-learn plan as part of the requirement. So if you think back in May, when we made the shift after the governor, the, um, public health changed their guidance, the governor came out and, and changed guidance, public health came out, changed guidance. So when we made those changes, we anticipate that's how we'll start this next year. Um, we're still gonna try and do social distancing if we can, as much as you can in a school, um, because that guidance has not changed for us. Masks, obviously optional, um, still sanitizing and cleaning, um, probably more frequent, air, high-traffic areas more frequently. So some of those things we're not gonna change. But the crux of our plan, if you remember from last year, was how do we, how do we get back in school? And what do we do for contingencies if we have, you know, eighty percent of our kids gone? Because they either have to quarantine or, or whatever. So that was a lot of what the plan was. I anticipate it'll be really simply what we had at the end of the year with, here's how we're gonna operate for the last eight to ten days. And then I anticipate that's how we'll start next year, unless we get different guidance. Now, the governor did come out today with a proclamation on health guidance. A lot of the things that she put in place will expire on Ju- on July twenty-fifth. And we talked, that's when we would bring our plan. So we just have to go through this month, go through that proclamation. I think it's very similar to what we already have structured, you know, based on those guidelines. So we'll, we'll compare those two and then bring that return-to-learn plan. But that's one of the requirements that we have to submit for the federal government.
Hey Sharon, on those ESR funds, you, for the public feedback or ideas, can you provide a list of, hey, here's the, here's some of the, because there's restrictions. We can't just go, we can't go buy buses with it necessarily. So here's the ten things that we're thinking that would fit well for this, that our district could use
Right.
Um, to be able to kind of provide a framework for that feedback?
Sure.
I think that would be very beneficial.
Yeah. And, and we have to allocate, for the, for the S three funds, we have to allocate twenty percent to, to go toward learning loss. So out of the five-hundred-and-fifteen or seventeen-thousand dollars, twenty percent of it has to be earmarked for learning loss. If you look at our proposal for what we want to plan for that, we have well over twenty percent, because that's obviously a value. We want our kids to be successful. So if that's the value, then we want to put most of our, our resources there if we can. So that's, um, but yes, I can, I can put the three or four categories that we're looking at, the four, five or six, because there are a few other categories we can use. They typically don't apply, but we can put those on there. Um, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Could you remind me how much the S R two funds were?
S R two was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I'm looking at Ted, because he usually remembers those numbers specifically. But I'm sure that one's two-hundred-and-fifty and I, and I'll just pull it up. I think the S R three funds is five hundred, I want to say it's either five-hundred-and-thirteen or five-hundred-and-seventeen, somewhere just over five-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen. Six-hundred-and-twenty-five, to be exact.
Thank you.
And of that seven-hundred-plus thousand, how much is used by, you know, already, you know, the capacity, uh, till two thousand and twenty-four? When I say used, like with this reading interventionist and all the-
So if we apply all of the things that are, that we're gonna propose, um, we'll have about fourteen thousand. And that's including air conditioning. I mean, that's one that we take off or put on, depending on it, because every time you look at an air conditioning section, so when we talked about having nine sections, each one is about fifty thousand dollars. So if we're gonna do two sections, you can figure about a hundred thousand dollars. Now we have one section that's sixty-seven thousand and another section that's thirty thousand. So we're just estimating about fifty for each one of the sections, so.
Got it.
So we have cleaning crews right now that are-
We do.
Under the ESR funds or not?
No.
No.
No, they're just under our custodial contract, because we don't have enough custodians.
Are they private sector?
Yes.
So-
They're cleaning companies.
Okay.
And we, we bid that out. They all, they all do background checks. We've made sure of that, because obviously they're in a building. They're, they're only here in, at night. Some come later, um, depending on what, what else they have to do, but.
So then when we utilize the ESRs, then, um, would we have to go out for an RFP then on the cleaning crew?
And I'm, tell me if I don't answer your question. Um, the, the cleaning crews we've contracted services with. So we, we have a contract. We can end it any month. One of the things, we met with the Labor Management Committee before we did that, because this is obviously a, a concern. If we don't have people and we're having to contract out services that some of our people here do, what does that look like long-term? And we definitely didn't want people to think we were taking jobs, because that wasn't at all. We just needed to support the, the people that we had. And so we met with the Labor Management Committee and we worked out what it could look like. So we made sure that each one of those cleaning contracts was a monthly contract. So we, we contract for the nine months that we're in school, but we can end it on any given month. So let's say we're gonna have a job fair on August, um, fourth. Let's say that three people come in and that completes our crew. We don't even have to hire those companies back in August, because we've, we're now fully staffed. So what, ideally, we become fully staffed and then we don't have to use the outside cleaning companies. But like I said, I can't put that burden on the people who are here to try and do that three people's work in a night. It just, it, it, it can't work. So that's why we're using them.
And the staff currently is under, um, they thorough background checks?
Yes. Yes. Any, anybody that works here is background checked, but the companies that we contract with also do that.
When you were asking about, um, RFP, was that for the- Okay. Because we did, back last summer, when we first contracted these, we got quotes from several, if I remember right. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that would probably- And that would probably suffice if Esser required anything like that?
Correct.
Okay.
But we're still using them as part of our general budget. They're not from an Esser fund.
They are not?
No, the, the extra cleaning that we did was, we had, we moved a custodian to daytime so that there could be extra support, cleaning high-traffic surface areas. And so that, you know, I mean, so just shifting some of that stuff and extra supplies, extra, you know, the spray guns that you use to clean surfaces, all that, we could use either in, we could either, we applied some of it to our FEMA money, which we did get, and some of, we can apply. So some of these Esser funds are for that.
Sorry if you already said that.
No, that's okay.
Thank you. Sharon, how, how many FTEs are we down in the custodial?
Uh, three full-time. And then we had, I want to say, three or four that were two or three-hour a night. And we're down those as well.
So when we, when we, when we built the auditorium, built the CTE building, part of the conversation was how are we going to maintain those facilities? And so are we down with that in mind or are we just down that many from what we normally have?
We're down that many from what we've normally had. We're down that many from three, three full-time. And then I would say the equivalent of another full-time with the, the part-time that kind of filled in on any given night. So that's Esser 2 and Esser 3 funds. Now, for a good conversation, which are always worthwhile. I visited with Coach Stewart, who is our football coach. And we are, will have, hopefully, we have 23 or 24 freshmen signed up for football. So we are into the 60s with our numbers, which obviously great to have kids involved. They would like to schedule a freshman season so that those kids can have some opportunities at game time. And so in order to do that, he's recommending that we add a coach, which I am going to make sure we, you know, allow for in the budget if we have that many kids involved. We looked at conference schools. Brayton Weber, our new AD, has worked with four schools, or we have at least four games on the calendar, possibly six. And then Mike and I visited that if those numbers drop for any reason, then we don't use the coach. And that, he said that whoever is hired for that coaching position will know that. So based on having high interest, making that ratio about equivalent to what other schools are using in the conference, and then putting schedules on, or putting games on the schedule so that there's a coach that can be directly, that goes with those kids, is why the recommendation came to me and why I think it's a good move. So when that comes through, you'll see. I don't think they've hired yet. I think that'll be a July hire, but I wanted you to be aware that we will be adding a freshman. I mean, they'll, they'll be labeled a coach, but they will be the one that go with the freshmen and work with the freshman team, so.
So just a general question about that, with that large number of kids coming in, do you have any idea what it was last year? I mean, what's the increase? I mean, is it?
Yeah, I, last year I think we had, I want us to, I'm going to go back off my memory, which isn't always great. But I want to say that we were in the mid-50s for the number of kids and we're moving up to 63. And we were high at a ratio last summer. So Mr., Mr. Castor, do you know what our freshman number was last year for football? How many freshmen did we have out?
Uh, 15, 18 maybe.
Yeah, so maybe an increase of eight to, you know, five to eight. But even, I mean, but we didn't have a separate schedule. So we need a coach that's going to go with those kids to the games. One of the challenges with using volunteers, which we've used to kind of make our numbers a little bit more in ratio. But volunteers can't always be available, whereas a coach, that's the expectation, so.
And what's, what's our numbers in the junior high program right now? Are they, are they going to support?
Mr. Castor?
Uh, the numbers in the junior high program will be big this next year.
Call you eighth grade?
Yes, I think we're 42s will be finished by the last year. And I, I would anticipate that we'll be at least 40 this next year as well. So I think we've got to make it come and celebrate last, our sixth graders, seventh graders. The group that is going to be eighth graders, they were over 112 this last year. And I thought this day will be that.
Thank you.
I would just say this is a welcome change because when, you know, one of the reasons we moved conferences is because we didn't have very many even JV games. And we had a lot of our conference schools that couldn't field a JV team. So I think it's just awesome. Like this is, this is really great. So, and I know I have a freshman and I know he's really excited for freshman football, so. Because I don't think he'd probably get much JV playing time. And that's always a tough spot for kids to, because you got to wait for the juniors to clear out. And then, yeah, it's, it's a tough time. And there, there's a lot of difference between freshmen and juniors, right? These is boys and men, so.
It'd be nice to see that in some of the other sports too, hopefully lots of opportunities. You know, basketball, baseball, all these other sports too, where our numbers are high. Or, or are climbing hopefully. And if kids see the opportunities to play a little bit more in high school, maybe our numbers will continue to be high in some of those other sports as well.
Yeah. And we did, just as a final note, we did get, the, the state always sends us a legislative update at the end of the year with all the new bills, appropriations and things like that. It came out just today or Friday? They usually try and send it to, us things on Fridays. But, so I will give an update on all of that. So there were questions about charter schools and about the new open enrollment guidelines and about the appropriations for secondary, like our kids can take post-secondary classes in the summer, which we hadn't been able to do before, that the, that they can apply to that post-secondary option and get it paid for. So I'll bring a summary of all of that to the July meeting. But if there are things that you've heard about and you want to know kind of where it ended up, you can always let me know and I can tell you, so.
All right, are there any other questions for Ms. Dentley? Not hearing any, we'll go on to our next issue. Discuss and/or approve consent agenda items. It does require a motion and a second in order for us to vote to approve the consent agenda. Everybody should have gotten their past meeting minutes. The monthly bills and financial statements, the, the addition was laid out here for us tonight. And then hires and resignations, we have a number of them. Nicole Vogt resigns from that risk director's position. Rose Dickinson added at risk director position. Jamie Lee hired as high school interventionist. Steve Castor resigns as middle school football coach. Elizabeth Ford resigns as an associate. LeAnn McFarland resigns as elementary secretary. Amber Sayer hired as a cook. Dawn Ferber hired as an associate. Susan Ellender hired as an elementary secretary. And Virginia Harkin hired as an associate. And there was some open enrollment also included.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that moves us to the items for discussion, meet and confer group. This would require a motion and second to approve increases for the meet and confer group for the 2021 school year. I got you. All right. The meet and confer group, this does require a motion and second to approve the increases for the meet and confer group for the 2021 school year.
So, yeah, I apologize. I'm trying to make sure our people at home and in the audience can see what we're talking about. The, the meet and confer group is the, the group of associate, or the group of people who typically work a 12-month contract or an extended contract. They're not certified, they're not certified teachers. Their certified teachers are part of the teachers' union. And we also have a support staff union. So bus drivers, associates, cooks are all, custodians are all covered on the support staff agreement. So we also have then people who work all year round. Administrators are in this category, directors are in this category, and our support staff secretaries are in a, in a meet and confer group. So instead of negotiating as a union, we meet and confer about concerns that they have, recommendations. When I started here, my recommendation for the meet and confer group wages is always the lower of the two that we settle at. So this year, the lower wage was 2.81%. So my recommendation is the meet and confer group get a 2.8, 2.81% increase. And so that's the recommendation for meet and confer.
Are there any questions or discussion on this issue? This would require a motion and a second for us to vote to approve the increases for the meet and confer group for 2020, 2021 school year.
I'd motion to approve the increases for the meet and confer group for the 2020 to 2021 school year.
I think we probably should put the percentage into that motion.
Oh. Of 2.81% increase.
And I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the 2.81% increase for the meet and confer group. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Certified staff handbook. This also requires a motion and a second in order to vote to approve the certified staff handbook.
So this, and I'll just talk about the support staff handbook as well. I sent both of them to you. These are the, the documents about four years ago. And Jeremy, you can help me with the dates. But about four years ago, the legislature changed kind of how unions negotiate and what had to be kept in a contract or what could be removed from a contract. And there was a lot of, I think, tension in school districts about what would happen to what we've been negotiating for the last 20 or 30 years with the new changes to legislation. And so what we did is I worked with the labor management teams in both departments, the certified staff and the support staff, and we created the handbook. So a lot of the information that was in the contract, some of it had to be excluded from the contract. We just moved that over into the handbook. And then we also added additional information. So some of the things that we wanted our staff to know around technology or some of the expectations we had around learning, how to do trainings, all of that now is found in one place. So we created our first one in 2019. This is just with edits. We will print these again this year and publish and give one to each of the staff members. They're a great resource for when we're doing PD. But it also just spells out HR things, the insurance options, all of that information in the handbook. So there were no significant changes to this. There were updates and, you know, changes to, to a couple of the professional learning things that we've been working on. But this is, and all of them have been sent to the different union reps and gotten feedback from. So these have been vetted. So we're recommending that you approve, in this case, the certified staff handbook.
I would just like to say, I do appreciate the way that this is handled here. I know it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily popular with the unions to move in that direction. But I think the way we handled it at the school here was markedly different than it was handled in other schools. And I think we avoided a lot of those issues that they have encountered and continue to encounter because of it, so. This does, and we'll just handle both of these at the same time if there's no objection. I'd move to approve the certified staff handbook and approve the non-certified staff handbook.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the certified staff handbook and the non-certified staff handbook. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? All right. The transfer of ESSR, ESSER2 funds to the nutrition fund. This does require a motion and a second in order for us to vote to approve the transfer of $22,515.82 from the ESSER2 funds to the nutrition fund.
Say that fast.
I'm not going to.
The, one of the things between March of last year and December is we saw a decline of $48,000 in our nutrition fund. And one of the reasons for that is because as a, as a board, the decision was made that we would continue to pay our employees from when the school shut down in March through the end of this, through the end of their contract. We can apply our SR2 funds to that payment. So we weren't getting any money in for lunch program because kids weren't here. But we can apply that expense that we had to continue to pay those workers. And so that number is the $22,515. So we're asking that you approve using SR2 funds for that purpose. And I'll just explain one more thing. Those come from the general fund. So our SR2 money is put in the general fund. Typically, we don't have to do a budget or a board action, but because the nutrition fund is a separate fund, we have to take board action to move it from the general fund to the nutrition fund.
I would, if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $22,515.82 from the SR2 funds to the nutrition fund.
Second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we transfer $22,515.82 from the SR2 funds to the nutrition fund. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board election 21 information. This is for information only.
So we have board elections this fall. We have two seats open or up for election. And I just wanted to get people timelines. This information will be posted. We, we sent it to the auditor to make sure all of our information was up to date. So it is posted on the website as well. The first day to file papers with Mr. Bauer, our board secretary, is August 23rd. The last day to file papers is September 16th. And the election will be November 2nd this year. If, if you're interested in running for the school board, you need to have a petition, for the lack of a better word. Sign petition. And there is a minimum of 36 signatures on that. So just, and most often people get a ton more. So just, so people know that there, you do have to have 36 signatures on your ballot when you bring it in for, to be considered on the ballot. They, voters vote at their designated poll. It, school board elections are a little different. Anybody can vote for the open seat. So if we have an open seat, I think Sarah is example, she's New Virginia. Anybody in the district can vote for the New Virginia seat. It doesn't have to be just people in that district. So we have an at-large seat in four districts, but anybody in the district can vote for any of the seats. So that's a little different than what you usually see in elections. So I wanted to make sure we talked about that. Our District 3 seat and our District 4 seat are up this year. So you have to live within District 3 or District 4 to run, but any can, anybody can vote. We do have some IASB, Iowa Association of School Board, training opportunities. I did include these in the information that is posted on the website. On August seventeenth, there's a new board candidate webinar, so it's basically Board Responsibilities 101. You know, what are, what are you getting yourself into? On August thirty-first, there is a legal and ethics conversation, and these are usually hosted by Iowa Association of School Boards, but they have current board members that are serving on the, on the committees that are talking through these things. So, there's a lot of real applicable examples. You know, this is one of the things that I didn't even think about, but maybe you need to consider, so. And then, on September twenty-first, there is a webinar for equity in student learning. So, just, I put the information on there, information about people with questions about absentee ballots. The one change is absentee ballots, you can't absentee ballot now or vote on the day of the election. It ends the day before at four-thirty. It used to be that you could take an absentee ballot in on the day of, but you can't do that anymore, so I just included all that update. I know this is sometimes overwhelming, so call either Mr. Bauer or myself, and we can walk you through or get you in touch with who you need to if you're interested in running for the board, so.
And you have to live in District Three and Four. District Three to run for District Three?
Correct.
District Four to run for District Four, but we all get to vote.
Correct. And if you're not sure, if you're in, what district you're in, we have maps and we can pull it up and let you know.
The, what is the District Three and the Four in terms of the general vicinity? Do you know?
District, Sarah, are you four?
I don't know what number I am.
Let me look. Let me look.
I don't know what's New Virginia, but I don't know which number.
But there's a sliver that goes up the New Virginia one that I think is two or one, whatever Eddie's in, and then there's the St. Charles one that has fingers go in different places, so it's primarily Truro and primarily New Virginia.
A little bit of Clark County that we hold is yours.
Yep. So, that's just an FYI because we are getting up on those timelines, and that's why I thought if people were interested, that gives them a little time to plan or ask questions, or...
Well, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm, I'm happy if any of the public has questions on what it's like to serve on the school board, or, you know, I'm happy to answer any, any questions that people might have, so.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Revenue purpose statement for information only.
So, this is one that Ted and I have talked about extensively. We worked with, tell me his name, Matt Gillespie, thank you. They, this is one that came about as a result of some of the changes in legislation two years ago, I believe, and so, what, what happens is, we need to have, our, our current, our existing revenue purpose statement is valid through January first of two thousand thirty-one, twenty thirty-one. We need to have, between now and then, an election to renew that. This is the, this is the, the category of funding that offsets a lot of things for instructional purposes. It includes things like, where's my list? In, PEPAL, SAVE, our bond payments for our auditorium and our CTE building, if we want to do future things with facilities, you know, and, and all of those things kind of are housed in this purpose statement, and really what it is, is we have to articulate what we will use those funds for. So, as a board, you have to say, we want the board, or we want the public to approve the use of tax dollars in our equation. It's not extra, it's in that equation of, of what's levied for these purposes. It's, it's not new, but everybody has to do it again before the twenty thirty-one deadline. There are some stipulations, and why we're bringing it to you now to consider is, we can host a special election in September, which, right or wrong, we can do that. We can put it on the ballot when we have the school board elections in November, or we can do it in, I think, March.
Right.
If it doesn't pass, you have to wait six months before you can put it on again. So, if for some reason, the public didn't have enough information, or wanted us to reconsider part of how we're using it, or whatever, if it doesn't pass, we have to wait six months to put it on again. So, what we're asking is, just really for you to consider when you would like to bring this up, when you would like us to put it in for, for a vote, or put it on the ballot. So, I just wanted to give you the background. It's, you know, it's not anything we need to do tomorrow, but it is something we need to think about over the course of the next probably year or so as to when you want to put it on. I do think it would be beneficial for Matt Gillespie to come down to a board meeting and answer questions around it as we get ready to roll this out to public and make sure they're informed on what it is, because he deals with it day in and day out. But we do know that it, it is kind of a change from what we've had to do in the past, so we just wanted to make sure that you at least had it on your radar and know that we will have to have an election or a vote on the ballot for it.
So, you're saying either September, November, or?
March.
March.
March, before twenty thirty-one.
So, if we were to do it in, say, September, that's a special election?
Yes.
Do we bear the cost of that election?
We do.
If we do it in November, we do not?
Correct, because we already have.
It would cost less.
It would cost less. We already have, I mean, you'd have to print it on the ballots and all of that, but it would not be a special election.
And the cost of a ballot was like four thousand dollars the last time we did, looked into something like this, so, okay. And then, I would, I would be very much in favor of having Matt come down, because I think he can make it pretty, he explains things well, at least in my mind.
Yeah.
And then I'd be curious to see what is actually on the ballot, right? How do you condense such a, a broad topic into, you know, I'm sure it's, do you agree with the RPS or not, and if I'm a voter, I wouldn't even know what the heck that is, so.
So, we'd have to obviously educate well before.
Do some education, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, are there any other questions or comments about the RPS issue? All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. So, our next meeting, we have a board training with the ISAB Tuesday, July thirteenth at six P.M., and then our regular board meeting is Monday, July twenty-sixth. Did we, do we need to discuss that date? It sounded like a...
I mean, unless you're gonna move it an entire week, I mean, I could probably call into it.
Okay.
Don't sound so excited.
Did you hear my excitement?
I got, I got the excitement.
The July date, is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah, it's a dead week, and there's a lot of vacations scheduled that week. You know, that was the week that the, I think the governor said we couldn't do anything.
Oh, when they can't have any sports or activities.
Yeah, there's no sports, and I think a lot, probably the public and us have set vacations, so.
We, I mean, we can move it, too. I don't, the only thing we have, I mean, the only thing I'm thinking timely that we have on there that would be maybe impacted by that is the return to learn, but we got the proclamation today, so we can have that ready if we want to do it earlier, so.
Or, or people on vacation can call in, and we'll just make sure it's a loaded agenda.
Sounds good. I'll be...
All right. So, let's, let's have a conversation about that so we can get that decided sooner rather than later on when, if we need to move it. All right. We would need a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll move to adjourn, I'm sorry. I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second that. No, Cindy did.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we go into adjournment. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.